I'd like to call the Hollis Brookline Co-operative School Board meeting. Order at six oh nine. And first, I need an appointment of the process observer. So then Holly, thank you for volunteering.
It's my favorite job.
Agenda adjustments. Just have one, we're going to move our student representative to right after public input. And the other one was to go ahead and do our vote on the travel instead of moving it down to the liberal agencies after we discuss it.
Okay.
The first thing that we need is approve, a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
So, Holly?
Second.
There were a couple of adjustments that she made to the agenda, probably someone already sent them in. I was not here, so I can't vote. Can we take a vote on the minutes as, to accept the minutes as amended on November fourteenth?
I'm sorry, you can't vote.
No, I'm sorry, I can't vote. Read.
She's demonstrating what to do.
Yes.
Yeah. And we also had minutes from the non-public on the November fourteenth. And I need a motion to accept those votes.
So moved.
Second. So can we vote on the motion to accept the minutes as presented on November fourteenth? Okay.
Three zero one.
Three zero one. And one more set of minutes. The special meeting that we had on November twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, can have a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. And can we, Melanie was not here, so we, sorry. I just saw that, I just, I was, I'm just looking at this.
I'll second.
Yeah, so John can second.
Gotcha.
Can we take a vote on the minutes, to accept the minutes of the November twenty eighth meeting as presented? Three zero one. All right, and we are over to Mr. Corey.
I have two retirements tonight. The first one is from Don Bogus. Don is a PE teacher at the high school. He writes that after much thought and discussions, I have decided to retire at the end of the current school year in June of two thousand nineteen. I want to thank Don for all his efforts. He's been a longtime teacher and coach for us and has done a tremendous job. And it's with regrets that I announce his retirement, but yet hope the board will support it for him to move on to the next phase of his career.
Can I have a motion to accept superintendent's letter of retirement?
So moved with gratitude for all service.
Okay. All those in favor? Four zero zero.
The second one says, Dear Mr. Corey, I am writing to inform you of my intent to retire from my teaching position at Hollis Brookline High School at the end of the school year in June two thousand nineteen. I am extremely grateful to have been able to serve the students of these two towns for the past twenty-two years. Many people work at jobs that they dislike. I have been so fortunate to have a job that I have truly loved. Hollis Brookline has really been an excellent fit for me. My own children, who are graduates, were served well by this outstanding staff. Undoubtedly, this is a difficult life decision for me, and I shall miss my students, but I look forward and am excited to embrace the next chapter of my life. And that is from Bonnie Del Signori, math teacher at Hollis Brookline High School. And again, I want to just publicly thank Bonnie for all her efforts and her time here at the district. She has done remarkable things for many of our students.
Can I have a motion to accept the resignation of Bonnie?
So moved also with gratitude for all service.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
Sorry, Andy, you said she's retiring at the end of twenty nineteen.
The last piece of correspondence is just kind of an update. At our last board meeting, we had talked about the potential for the town of Hollis to utilize our playing fields. And Mr. Blanger has joined us tonight, and he is going to kind of give us an update. I let Mr. Blanger know that the board is not at full strength tonight, but that I felt we could listen and digest his thoughts and probably come back to this in January and try to make a decision for him. So I'll turn it over to you.
I'm Dave Blanger with the Hollis Rec Department, and I'm going to back up in a little, give you a little history of how we got to this point. We were looking for two fields for the town of Hollis last year, which got voted down. We still have that need. Even with the turf field going in, that might help alleviate it because there may be time there, but we still need one more field. It's the intent of the Hollis Rec Commission to investigate three different options and come back to the selectment of Hollis and make three presentations for three different fields. Presently, we've been looking at the Stepanowicz property, and we've been looking at the property behind the DPW. We're trying not to purchase any land. And in our research and some of the people in the public came to us and said that there's land and potential on the school property out behind the turf field. So what it's our intent is to fund a study that would tell us, is it feasible to put a field on school property that the town could use? Well, I say the town, actually both towns, because the lacrosse, the soccer, and all, all the sports teams now are Hollis Brookline. Cal Ripken, they're all Hollis Brookline. But the field would be funded by the town of Hollis. You would fund the feasibility study to find out, is it possible to put a field in? Is there water? And how would it look? So that's what my intent is, is to come and try and figure out that part of the puzzle so that we can put the school property up against the other three properties and get feedback for that one field. How the financing would work, I'm not exactly sure. I would think a lease or something along that line that the town of Hollis would pay for. The town of Hollis, it would be our intent would do all the maintenance on that and upkeep of the field. The benefit to both communities is that we would have another rectangular field that is centrally, I say centrally located in Hollis, it's not out on South Merrimack Road that's away from the people in Brookline, that would be available to vote. The second part of that is our fields get overused, and I know the school fields get overused. By having a field here, if a field needed to be rest, rested, we could team up and use that field as a crossover in those times that a field would need to be rested. Presently, we really only have, in the town of Hollis, two rectangular fields. We have Hardy North and Hardy South, and Hardy South is really not a full-size field. It works well for the other soccer. I have color photos there that show the property. When looking at it, I really only saw that there was, there's actually three options of where that field could actually fit. There's one, what I think is the best one, would be next to the turf field, behind the softball fields. We're going to need our own parking, so that would have to be incorporated into it. And I suspect that if you put your turf field in and you have a big event, you're going to run out of parking as well back there, and you would end up having to utilize parking up here. There may be the potential to put in another parking lot there that, in a big event, that you could use that as well. As I see it, the other two options would be between, be it just above where the lacrosse teams are coming up the hill, but that has so much terrain difference that I don't think it's really a feasible. You probably have a thirty to forty foot difference from the low point of the field to the high, which increases our cost of building the field. And the only other option I thought of on that field was that you have, I'll call it for no other argument, the football practice field or the Garden of Rocks. I don't know what the water situation is there. I can tell you that if you did not need that field because you found a place for the football team to practice somewhere else because you have the turf field, I know what we paid on that, on Hardy South, to bring that field up a foot and to put irrigation in, which I think we spent about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do that. And I would suspect that's about you're looking at just to bring that football field at a minimum up to a standard playing conditions. But our intent is to fund the feasibility, see how it would lay out, see if there's water, what it would cost to develop it, and then come back to the people of Hollis and say, these are our three options, and which one should we move forward with? So I guess what I'm really looking at this point from the co-op is really just the ability for us to fund the feasibility study at this point. I'm not looking for any approval, I'm just looking for the ability for us to move forward with a feasibility study to see if it's possible and what it would cost. I'm hoping that there is some economics of scale with the turf field going in and the engineering department already there that would reduce our cost to do that at this point in time.
So Dave, can I ask questions? So are you, so you're saying the town of Hollis would cover the construction of the field, that would pay for the construction of a parking lot, would pay for the engineer, all of it, everything? You're not asking the co-op to put any money towards this field?
No.
At the end of the day, say this happens, who owns the field?
What I would suspect that we would have to either look at two options. One, Hollis buying the land outright, or two, a long-term lease. You know, in my mind, something like a twenty-five-year lease, and at the end of the twenty-five years, you always own it. At the end of the twenty-five years, either renegotiate with the town or you own it and the town walks away.
And then who, who manages, who plays there and when?
It would be the Hollis Rec that would manage that field.
And does the Hollis Rec have a relationship with Brookline Rec? Is that something that you guys work on together at all?
We don't have a relationship with there. What we have is a relationship with all the programs because right now-
All of the programs are combined.
Combined. So we have the HSL-
HB Cavs, HB Junior Cavs, HB YL, yeah.
And we have a good relationship with the, our rec director, Kyle, who's leaving, and the position's open up if anybody wants to apply for it there.
Get my application.
And the ADs here at the co-op. So, you know, when there's a problem scheduling because rain and you get doubled up on teams they call us, they will use Hardy and so forth.
And just one more thing, there's three rectangular fields. Isn't Nichols Field considered a rectangular field at Hollis? The one in the track where the lacrosse game's at?
Yeah, that is, yeah.
The third one?
And the feasibility study would be all three of these areas?
The feasibility would just, they would take a look and we would just take their recommendation for the best place to put it, based upon price, parking.
The water, and not interfering with the current fields that we use.
Right. We know that we would have to put a well in. I mean, that's not, that's part of it.
So the feasibility study would include water usage, because I've heard that's an issue in this area, right?
I think the feasibility would really be just, is there a water source? And can the water source support the field?
The addition of the field?
Yeah.
Along with everything else? Because I think everything's on the same water table here, from what I understand. That, I think that came up during our turf field discussions.
We've been investigating sources for the middle school and really haven't found an alternative yet at this point. So that would be an interesting piece for us, period, just to know where else is water on the property.
And maintenance would be done by you guys and maintaining the roadway, plowing it, all that, whatever needs to happen. Maybe the winter time it doesn't get, needs to get plowed, but-
It would be used there, and most likely it would be a gravel road and gravel parking lot. You know, if you, if you look at the parking lots at Hardy North and Hardy South, it would be just similar to that.
Is there the potential with the gravel driveway to give the high school a second means of egress off the property?
If you get, look at the color picture. I just want to get the color.
Take the chair.
I'll give you both. That's one I didn't think you could do. One with the color. You can see the property on that one. I don't have any more color. If you look at the one with the color, you can see where the, I propose or I think there's room for the field. That's not where you actually touch the road. Where you actually touch the road is down by the football practice field. So somehow you would have to get the road there to get the egress.
Oh, I see.
At any point, do, could we extend what I would call the road up to Mr. McGlaughlin's house?
Well-
To get to the field, is that?
It's, the question is, if you were to put this roughly where I had put this, on this, I know they can't see in the public, but the only other egress would be to come in off that road where you have the property or getting right of way from Mr. McGlaughlin.
Okay.
Now, if you tell me that the water source is down below the teacher's parking lot, and you're not going to use the football, the football practice field as much, and that's the potential site for it, and we could put a well down there and pump it up, then yes, because we'd be trying to put the parking lot up in that area, and then that would give you the access to the egress.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Next, we'll let Mrs. Martin do hers. This is a little-
So I have a few updates to share with you tonight. So Student Council is exploring the idea of fixing this traffic solution, and I know that traffic's a very expensive project that requires the approval at the state level and a lot, but this idea seems a lot less expensive. And so we're looking at, in the morning, creating a right lane into the student's parking lot. Now, many students right now kind of do that as the drop-off line starts to get backed up and they go off into the gravel a little bit. So it would just require paving that a little more. We did do a little field trip at our last meeting, kind of threw in this light post here, but there shouldn't be too much interference, but I know, you know, with the workforce zoning it, why not? But we wanted to ask if that's something you would back us on, if you wanted to explore that more in the future.
Well, certainly, Mary, if you're going to give back, I think it's great. I mean, I've sat in that line and been completely frustrated by the fact that you can't really scooch around. I have no idea how much something like that would cost or what it would entail, but, you know, I think exploring that would be great because it is a bottleneck right there.
I agree. And actually, I would, I would ask if you guys considered the exit out on one twenty-two also?
Yeah.
Because I've seen people making a right, go off into the dirt and turn that into a lane. So I don't know if that was considered? Is that something you guys?
You know, it's something that gets brought up every year. I, correct me if I'm wrong, is there probably the field there? Is that why you can't create another lane?
The bigger issue is anytime we get into paving, even though it seems like it's a simple expense, it usually isn't when you start getting into feet and how many feet. And we've had many discussions with Student Council. Some of the old proposals that go back five or six years, there was a discussion of a road coming in and around, looping some, through some of the wetlands, and the estimated cost on that, I think it was like about a million dollars. And that was six years ago, to just do a simple, straight paved road. So this wouldn't be that much. But there's also, to Mary's suggestion, many areas that we're looking at with, involve the state and everything else, it's never a simple process. But the entering in the parking lot right, something that's definitely been discussed before here and elsewhere.
Well, I guess, my specific question is on that exit there. People are already driving on that. It's not an additional road, really, so.
So you're talking about the exit onto Route one twenty-two?
Right.
Not the exit by the field?
Right.
But the exit all the way?
I mean, just, right, similarly, people get backed up there, and people are making a right. If there's a right lane, you know, that could alleviate some of that problem. Now, people are already doing it, which is why I brought it up. So from what I, and it's like a super rutted road, and people, I've seen cars bouncing through there to get, so I'm just wondering, there's already plenty of space. I know it's obviously, nothing's easy, and you got to, if you're going to turn into a real lane, you have to make sure you have all the space and everything, and you got to grade it, but, you know, it just seems like low-hanging fruit potentially if we were considering doing something like this also.
I think, yeah, afternoon traffic for sure is mentioned, so I'll bring that back. Another thing that's been going on at the school is we had Challenge Day last week, and I know Miss Dowd Park and the one here are going to be able to participate in that, but the student group, the Challenge Day was a very eye-opening experience and a kind of perspective of what goes on behind the scenes and students and teachers' lives and promoted tolerance and kindness in school. I think that is a, is a very valuable experience, and I think that other students would benefit from it. So I hope it's something that can come back next year and the year after. I know it's a very expensive thing to put on, but very valuable experience.
Agreed.
And then, in New Haven Arts, we are working on Mamma Mia, that's where Miss Colin's here. So the cast was just thrown out, and that will be happening in March. And then we had a large group of Dan and choir members be accepted into all states and jazz off-states this year. We were the third highest for Dan, so that's what we're voting to be committed on. And that's all I have today. Corey, hello. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak and giving your feedback. Appreciate it.
I just want to add to that whole, the Challenge Day thing, you know, there were only a hundred spots available, and my experience there, the more, the more students that get to experience it, the more likely there'll be any kind of cultural change that needs, if there's a cultural change that needs to happen, it's not going to happen. I mean, these hundred kids can go out and make a difference, but another hundred kids can go out and make another difference. And so I would love to see it continue for more than one year, not saying forever, but to see what happens if you do it for a couple of years in a row versus just doing it once.
I would say there has to be another step after just the one day for those, uh, two to, or not two, but group of what, seventy?
They're about seventy-five, yep.
Yeah, I think there needs to be another step. I know age group change is always working to kind of promote some of those things, but there has to be something else in order for everyone to have to use.
Was there a structured presentation or feedback mechanism to the rest of the school on how, what you guys covered there, experience?
So we're talking about that now with, with the club because nobody really knew exactly, we knew, but we didn't know, it's, to experience is a whole different matter. It's, you know, heavy-duty kind of social, emotional program, very impactful, very effective. There's a lot of different ways to do it. They offer a lot of different angles of doing it with, they're just, they're different and smaller groups. Can't really do larger than a hundred at a time, but the bigger question is, okay, then how do you go about integrating that into the school culture as well? Because it was a very profound experience for the students and the staff that attended. So, you know, that discussion is ongoing. I could see some sort of committee at the building level figuring out how we can integrate pieces of this throughout the school culture, because it was, it was good. It was, you know, it was transformative, was the word they used to describe it. I don't use that word lightly, so.
It really was.
That's cool.
Pretty special. Glad you got to.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go first?
I think Sarah's going first tonight. You guys quite agree.
I can roll right into it, because I've already started with, Mary kicked it off. But the majority of it was already on my board report, so I don't have to re-cover that. So thank you, Mary. She's covered everything. So if you have, I'm free to, if you want to have any questions on what's on there, I'm happy to take them. The only other things I have on there are the two trips. One to Spain, which we've done before in two thousand twenty for about forty students, and one also in two thousand twenty for, to Dublin, Edinburgh, and London. Both, we were trying to get these out earlier and earlier because we know families would like to know sooner rather than later and make a choice for what they would like to do, and knowing you can't do everything. But excited that we are able to have so many staff that want to provide these opportunities, and we seem to be able to, there's no shortage of students who like to go. Spain is connected to the World Languages Curriculum, obviously, Spanish, and the trip to the UK is connected to the World History and AP World Curriculum. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. I typically, they're usually ten-day trips. I encourage them to leave a day or two early before the break starts so they can come back, at least have some sort of rest, because at the end of April is prime AP season, and so we've learned over the years to come back on Sunday night is pretty tough.
And both of them are for April two thousand twenty?
Yes, yep.
So it's good to get them both out at the same time, because some kids might want to make a choice.
Right. And Spain, Spain tends, they, we're starting to sync things up so that with the World Languages, so that we're, and now that World History and Social Studies is doing more, we're trying to, there's a lot of communication and between the two so that kids can choose and have some sense of what's, and families have some sense of expectation of what's coming up, so it's not, you know, it's not a surprise.
And there's a pattern with World Languages, right?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the request for the World Studies and AP World History Student Trip to Ireland and Scotland, England, scheduled for April two thousand twenty, school vacation?
So moved.
All those in favor? And can I have a motion to approve the request for the World Language Student Trip to Spain, scheduled for April two thousand twenty, school vacation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero zero.
Thank you.
All right, well, you have my board report. I'll entertain any questions folks have. One item that came up today that I didn't have a chance to put in the report is Hollis Brookline Middle School has received a twenty-six hundred dollar grant from, let me just find the name of the organization, the Grassroots Fund. They support local initiatives by schools to build greenhouses, raise beds, and the twenty-six hundred dollars will go towards some excavation outside the greenhouse where the plan is to put some solar panels, so we'll run off of solar, and then also to do some, some raised beds. And I'll entertain any questions people might have about anything else in my report.
No questions, sorry. Looks great.
Do not apologize.
Valuable job.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Next up is Ms. Jana's presentation.
Thank you. All right, so it is up behind you over there, and I just wanted to take some time to discuss different ways that we look at and utilize data in the district, some of the ways. So I'll start with the traditional report that I put out, send out to families when I send school reports out in the spring for our Smarter Balance results. And these are also published in our district profiles. So this takes a look at, like I said, this is two thousand sixteen, Smarter Balance, the grade level, seventh and eighth, and performance against the state. So for Smarter Balance, we administer those, or we used to administer that for grades three through eight, and then eleventh grade, we- three through eight, and then, um, eleventh grade, we, um, do our SAT, sorry. Okay, so then, uh, the significant thing about 2016, actually, I'll state that while we're over here, is we were still using paper and pencil assessment. So this was a static test, it didn't adjust if a student got an answer correct or incorrect, stayed the same. We were the last SAU in the entire state to continue to use paper and pencil tests. Um, so whether or not our data was comparable to the other districts is, um, something that some might argue. In 2017, that was our first year of going computer adaptive assessment. Um, the thought was that we would experience a decrease in some of our scores as our students had not been exposed to computer adaptive. What that means is they're taking the full assessment online, and, um, they are, the, the next question is dependent upon how they respond to the first one. So if they answer it correctly, the next question's a little bit more challenging, and more challenging, et cetera. And if they answer the question incorrectly, then it becomes a little bit easier and easier. So it responds to how the, the students, um, if they're getting the answer correct or not. Moving over to 2018, an interesting piece about 2018 was that our state moved away from the Smarter Balance assessment. We maintain the computer adaptive portion, but we rolled out a brand new assessment, um, that was not nationally normed, as Smarter Balance was, this is just a state assessment. Uh, and it was rolled out, uh, fairly quickly. That being said, the scale was set similar to Smarter Balance, so the, um, the thought was that the data would be comparable to the year before and the year before that. Looking at that, we did notice a marked improvement in, um, our math for grade seven and grade eight, and also for grade seven ELA. So that was, um, an important piece for us to review. When looking at the data, something that, that I do is I track a cohort over time. That becomes important for us, um, because we're looking for consistency. If you take a look at this one particular cohort, this group is our current eighth graders. I selected this group because we have, um, a little different circumstance than some districts, in that we are two separate districts up until sixth grade, and then in seventh grade, um, we join. So over here, you see different colors because that represents fifth and sixth, when they were in their elementary districts, and then the red is when they're together in the co-op. But regardless of, of, um, the fact that they're in two different elementaries, if you look, it's pretty consistent over time as they approach, um, our co-op. The other piece is, if you notice that here is where we are writing, handwriting essays and editing on paper, and then we switch over to computer adaptive when all of that editing is, uh, electronic. So just something to consider. But when we're looking at a cohort, we're trying to identify any outliers in a particular year and better understand that. So that's what we're gonna dig a little bit deeper to see, um, if there was a change in the assessment, a change in the instruction, a change in the, um, the, the bulk of the questions, if there was a change to our enrollment, that also has an impact. Uh, here's a particular cohort that was made, uh, that, the spotlight was shed last year in some of our meetings for this particular cohort, and as you can see, um, over time, this cohort happens to be a weaker cohort. And, um, you know, we're working with that group and noticing similar results in other areas, and we're remediating that as necessary. Um, so that was not necessarily a surprise to us. But what is very important is to try to better understand why participation in the statewide assessment system, participation in state assessment in general is important. And there's indicator one, which is the achievement indicator, which follows what they call the ninety-five percent rule. So according to federal guidelines, we are required to have ninety-five percent participation. And how they, um, worry about that is, let's say we had a class of one hundred students. What, the way they calculate our average is they take, um, the number of students at achievement level one and multiply that by one. You add that to the number of students at achievement level two, multiply that by two, then add that to the number of students at achievement level three, multiply that by three, and you do the same thing for four. You divide that total by ninety-five. If all one hundred students participated, your grade, your overall achievement level indicator one becomes a little bit artificially inflated because you had such high participation. When your participation, let's say, drops to eighty-five, eighty-five percent, eighty-five of those one hundred students, the divisor remains ninety-five. So the overall achievement level becomes artificially deflated. And so when you're looking at an achievement indicator for a school that we report out, like over here, you also have to consider the, the level of participation, and that becomes significant in adolescents, in middle schoolers, and whether or not they're that invested in this statewide assessment. So it's just another piece that we, we need to consider. Beginning, brand new this year, um, the state had to file their plan for, for ESSA, and the plan included identifying schools into different categories, comprehensive support and improvement schools, targeted support and improvement schools, and then additional targeted support schools. Additional targeted support schools are identified every three years, um, and they ta, and they take a look at specific cohorts. If there is an economically disadvantaged cohort, particular racial or ethnic group, students with disabilities, and English language learners. And if any one of those cohorts scores below, um, a particular level, then the entire school is labeled as an ATS school. So Hollis Primary, Hollis Upper Elementary have been identified as, um, additional targeted support schools, and that's based on a subgroup's participation. So we could be talking about ten students in the school. All right, another reason we take a look at data is to evaluate program effectiveness. Division Math 2.0 was fully implemented in Brookline in 2016, 2017 school year. So the question is, um, did we notice a marked improvement? And as you can see, um, the green represents, uh, 2018, and so if you can take a look, overall between the blue and the green, there is an improvement. If you notice, there's a slight dip in grade five and grade six, and the thought is, it, uh, when you fully implement a brand new program in later grades, they have, there's an assumption of a certain level of knowledge related to years prior that they hadn't been exposed to, but as you can see, they quickly recover in year two. So we felt that was a pretty good, um, implementation, and we'll be implementing that in Hollis next year. Another way we take a look at data is see how we do in relation to comparable districts. This, eh, I know it's pretty difficult to see, but this bottom right here, that represents the state of New Hampshire. That, that just became highlighted, that darker line right there, that is Brookline, that red right there is Hollis, and then right here is our co-op. So you can see how we, um, compare to other districts that we often look at, Amherst, Bedford, Oyster River, Hanover, um, Milford, Bow, Wyndham. You can see that we're doing fairly well. That was math. Here we have ELA. Just kidding. Many of you have the presentation in front of you, so I'll just keep going if that's okay with you. Um, all right, so our ELA, um, similar, I want to identify that our grade seven ELA, um, was one of the highest in the states in 2018, and our grade eleven ELA, so that's the SAT for our eleventh graders, SAT is the state assessment, and that was, um, matched with some of the highest districts as well. So we're definitely noticing high performance. Also, brand new last year was a science assessment. The thought was that kneecap science was going away, and that we would have a year off so that the state could develop a science assessment to replace it. However, the state, uh, rolled it out very quickly, and so we had a computer adaptive online science assessment last year, and that, in addition to a new assessment, it, we switched grade levels. So it was always four, eight and eleven, and then it became five, eight and eleven. So our grade five, um, did remarkably well, and as our students age up and we become more content focused, you know, it's like biology or chemistry as opposed to science overall, um, our results were not, were high, but not as high as our, our fifth grade results. So that's something the science committee is taking a look at, and, um, how we approach the science curriculum at the higher levels. Very excited that you have, um, approved PSAT eight, nine. As Mr. Thompson mentioned earlier, that was one of the highest attendance rates and zero opt-out, so there was a lot of buy-in to that assessment, and, um, the results became available on December third, and our students did quite well. Sorry, I just can't see the, what button to press. Um, go, oh, the second to the left, isn't it? I think, maybe? Thank you. Okay. So our grade eight PSAT did, as you can see, we, um, did very well, phenomenally well, much higher than the national average. I just want to point out that this is a national average and not a state, because there weren't enough, um, students in the state of New Hampshire participating in grade eight, nine PSAT, so only the national data was available. Um, but our students just, um, did remarkably well, and I think that it's interesting to take a look at this assessment where there's, um, a high degree of buy-in compared to this state assessment, when there's, for an adolescent, less buy-in for a seventh or eighth grader to participate in that assessment. So, um, as buy-in goes up, performance goes up as well. PSAT data for our eleventh grade students, this is class of 2019, our current seniors. Um, this is an important assessment because this allows our students to be recognized as national merit, um, semifinalists and finalists. We have, um, four semifinalists and five commended students, very strong performance for that cohort, and then just released on the third, I believe, uh, was our cohort that, that, our current juniors that took it in October. And once again, even, um, stronger performance than the year prior. So definitely our, our rating continues to be very, very strong in our math, strong as well. So other pieces of data that we take a look at for the high school, AP scores, high consistently year after year. Once again, um, the buy-in is there, the students have been working very hard toward this end goal for an entire year, and, um, there is a certain meaning, some of them are going to be earning college credit, um, as a result of that, so there's certainly some buy-in. ACT scores over time, very strong performance. Another piece of data we take a look at at the high schools are dropout percentage. We're over here, we certainly want to be as low as possible, so we're at zero percent, and that's something to be, to be proud of. But as I, you know, am discussing data, it's only one piece of the pu, the puzzle, and what I feel we do very well, and the principals speak to it in their goals, is finding ways to challenge our students more authentically, so that we don't just graduate numbers, we don't just graduate students with stats, we graduate students who have skills that they can apply in real world situations and, um, can, can move our community forward, um, as, as Einstein mentioned. Not everything that counts can be counted, and not everything that can be counted counts. So it's just important to realize that we're looking at the whole child, and we're looking at so much more than any one piece of data. So thank you.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Gina?
I have a question.
Yeah?
You mentioned, um, uh, class credit for the two SATs.
SAT.
SATs?
I'm sorry, no, not SAT, AP exam, sorry. It depends on where you go, so that's a whole other. College, college credit. So if you, uh, earn certain, maybe a five, sometimes a four, sometimes a three, if you pass the exam, various schools will allow you to do different things. Use it so that you don't have to take your entry level courses, some of it just allow you to go into a higher level course, some of, some schools don't accept it at all. Um, but ask any student, they know all about which schools except what.
I guess I have a quick question. On, on that science performance one, of course, I, I get the, the point you made at the end, and it's just a data point, but it looks like, you know, fifth grade did great, and then co-op.
Sure, so.
Struggled, so it was.
I, I wouldn't say struggled, so, uh, I think there are a couple of pieces to that, and certainly year two data would be very helpful.
Yeah, I, I agree, struggled is probably not a good choice of words, but.
Can I just make a comment on that? Is that a, I mean, I'm.
You can.
So one thing I'd like to point out about eleventh graders taking a science, um, assessment is that these eleventh graders are taking SATs more than once, they're taking AP tests more than once. And having had two eleventh graders who both have had to take a science state assessment, I think that we have to keep the buy-in factor in mind, and I, obviously other schools maybe, um, have a little bit more buy-in.
Pushing harder or whatever.
But our kids are really high achieving kids who focus on their grades and their AP test scores and their SAT scores, and I just, um, I, I'm speaking from my own household, I just don't think they really care that much about this test. Like, I'm sorry, it was just.
No, I mean, I think buy-in is, is certainly an issue. Another piece is that junior class had never taken an online assessment before, because keep in mind, um, Smarter Balance goes up to eight. So they had never, that was their first computer adaptive assessment, number one. Number two, you're taking a year of biology, a year of chemistry, and the science assessment, even when it was kneecap, is science. So is it very different perspective. Prior, it had been, um, fact-based questions on any given topic. This year, we switched complete, like our philosophy around it switched totally, so it's phenomena-based instruction. Um, and to wrap your head around that, and to, to try to understand what questions, where they're coming from, um, it was all simulations, which is, which is fine, but if they're not used to doing computer simulations, it's just a diff, very different approach. So, um, you know, a lot of different factors. I think buy-in is, is the biggest piece. You can see that our students do very well in science, in other assessments, so it's not necessarily particularly concerning. It's one piece of data. I don't know, Rick, did you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can certainly take responsibility for, um, some of the science piece. The kids, our kids are so focused on their, you know, they're doing the PSAT, the juniors, they're doing the SAT. Most of them, well, over half of them take at least one AP course, if not more. The amount of stress they have going on anyways, the science piece is not played up as much as school, this particular exam. Um, I think you'd see a very different result if that was somehow connected to their transcript, which I'm not advocating for, I think they're entirely overtested. Um, but they would, you know, it's completely, I just have very strong opinions about this particular test, given all the testing and all the different metrics that they perform, they, you know, they blow out of the water, quite honestly. Um, the ACT, SAT, AP, I mean, you put it out there, you know, we, the World History exam, which is not science, obviously, the, the WAP program, those scores, we struggled the first year, the next year, out of the park, you know? So if there's buy-in and they're connected to it, it's no problem, but when there's something else that's kind of just thrown at them, um, that's not something they're gonna buy into, and I have to, I struggle, I can't blame them for that, given how hard they work everywhere else.
But you did say that the science team is looking at these numbers as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks, I, I agree. It's, like, again, I, I prefaced my comments with it's just a data point, but I, I think it was worth at least asking about.
Sure.
I, uh, I, you know, fair enough, I understand the context a little bit better, and that makes a lot of sense, so.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
This point is, you know, one other question for Gina, she is, can you help?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you would just allow her to just run through the dates.
Oh, yes. I had just asked her to bring the dates, because there was confusion on some of the dates, whether they were second or third Wednesday, so she was just gonna review the dates going forward for the next couple months.
Okay, so we have January 16th, February 13th, that's a different week because of vacation that, that month, March 20th, April 10th, once again, we have school vacation that, that month, May 15th, and then June 19th. And I believe sometime around March, I brought it, the proposed calendar to the board to take a look at. So if you have suggestions for the second, switching it all to the second Wednesday or whatever the case may be, um, send those my way as I'm drafting the, the proposed dates for the following year, so I can take your suggestions. Thank you. Thanks, Gina, that was great.
All right, so next up is the STEM Lab discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, provide the board with some feedback. We had our first public. We had our first public forum on December fourth. I want to publicly thank Gina and Rick for their assistance, the three of us put that on. It was well attended, I would say we had approximately fifty people there. Many of the people that were in attendance were new to the community and hadn't heard about it last year, obviously, as new residents. And then a number of people came out to hear, kind of what else, say some new pieces of data. We really worked hard in our presentation to talk about how the rooms would be used from seven thirty to two thirty and then how they would be available for extracurricular activities from basically three o'clock till ten PM. We received some wonderful feedback from a variety of residents who had suggestions on how to enhance the presentation. They, a number of them commented they weren't aware of our growing class sizes and appreciated the learning of that and commented that they would be willing to support this type of project if they knew it was going to bring class sizes down as well. And that's really one of the things we're looking at because these three, three new classrooms that come on board free up three classrooms in the older section of the building that will be used for a humanities course, a math class, and become our second physics lab because we only have one lab at the present time. We will be doing a second public forum in January. We are kind of reframing a little bit our presentation based on some of the feedback. We've also received some updated slides from our architect, better depicting, depicting a, the physics lab in, in those spaces. And at that point, I think we'll have a, what I would say, a wealth of feedback to sit down and have a, a discussion with the board regarding the Warren article and that direction. And I'm happy to take any questions. We were able to give a number of our new residents a tour of the actual area that we're talking about and I think for many of them, when, when you physically walk in and see the space and realize your walls are there, your lights are there, your electric's there, your heat's there, they start to realize it, it really is efficient use of space. It's just a matter of whether the community can support the, the burden of what is approximately, approximately a two million dollar bond. Any questions on the forum? Gina will get out the, the date for the second one. All our principals put it in their newsletters. I think a number of people having attended last year maybe chose to stay home, but I was very happy with the turnout.
Right, so the next thing up is their review of the draft budget.
Right. In your packet you had the Excel spreadsheet as well as the, the four rounds. If you go to the, the Excel spreadsheet and go to the very last page of that, I'd like to just start the discussion there. Between our last meeting and our last budget meeting, one of the things that the board had done was approved the financing for the turf field. So that gave us a concrete payment of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. In the time between that and our budget meeting, we were not able to sit down and go through the entire guidance calculation again. So the budget committee rightfully determined the guidance, they kept their existing numbers they had from our previous meeting, which put us away from guidance at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. They did stress that, you know, from the chance point of view, they have to go through the formula again because that debt, when it's reinserted, does change the guidance number. And they also wanted to know what we were looking to cut because they weren't necessarily opposed to a different number, it's just based on what they had that night. So with that stated, I wanted to go through the new items and kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at so that you can have an understanding when we come back in January, probably some things to be expecting. So on round one of the new items, which is the four column sheets that's in your packet, under personnel, the first thing is Rick and I are talking because tonight we accepted a retirement in physical education. And as you know, the board already approved athletics and outside activities for PE credit. So we're trying to work our way through because we don't believe we need to fill that entire position. So we're not sure if that means one section or two sections. From our initial discussion, Rick and I are focusing on probably needing three to be on the safe side, but being able to eliminate two sections. So that would reduce that full time equivalent down to a point six. That would pick up a benefits package as well as New Hampshire retirement would not be funded at point six. So we, that will probably be going to the budget committee next month.
What page are you on? Sorry.
I'm on the very first page of it, but that one doesn't make it because the retirement was just read tonight.
Okay.
The.
So that's not an increase in the budget, that's a, that's a, that's not, that's, these are increases that you're looking for, so it wouldn't even be on here anyway.
Well.
It's just a change, it's a decrease.
A decrease does come onto the personnel sheet to offset it, to show how we get to guidance potentially. You know, we're working very hard, we, we don't want to lose that class teacher for the size reduction. Please also remember that we are picking up a teacher in the social studies area because of our, doing away with the topics classes during the program of studies. We are still examining the French teacher, we have it at point two. We did eliminate the other section at the middle school because we're pretty confident we'll fill one of the two, but it may be difficult to get both. Another piece that is changing because of what's changing across other budgets, we were working hard to see if we could get a facilities director and an SAU wide nurse. It doesn't appear that the next round that those two positions will make it through. So they'll be coming out of the Brookline, the Hollis and the co-op budgets. We'll use our present format, we forgot the facilities. At the co-op, we've already had to add, I believe it was a half nurse, Rick?
Yes.
Right. So I'm, I'm okay with the nursing staffing at the co-op level for next year because we've added that and that's covering some of our afternoon functions.
Afternoon functions, correct.
Okay. So, under the middle school, those two positions would also be eliminated, so you'd see those pieces of personnel coming out.
Can I stop?
Absolutely, always.
What happened with French? What's going on with the French?
We have it in the budget at point two and it's staying there now, but what we didn't do, we originally, if you went back another round, Holly, you would have seen a point two at the high school and a point two at the middle school. So we're just doing one point two at this point.
At the high school.
Correct.
And then the middle school won't be picking up a French teacher because there's a retirement.
Right. And it's our intent to ask that person to teach four Spanish and one French.
So we think we can find a Spanish-French person.
Right.
Yes.
We're hoping we can.
We're hoping.
Okay.
And I.
Just to kind of clean and clarify it because I know that French was definitely a class that was too big.
And our num, our numbers in French are going to go down anyways next year because there's three eighth grade se, sections.
Yeah, right.
And two seventh grade sections, which means next year there'll be two.
Right.
Eighth grade and three seven, so automatically those numbers are going to go down a, a little bit.
But it would certainly benefit the district if we could find somebody to teach both.
Absolutely, and that, that is a goal.
Okay.
And, and again, a person can teach, if I'm certified in Spanish, I can teach one area that isn't directly under my certification, so we may hire somebody who has the, I'll say, the appetite to return for more schooling to give us more diversity three or four years down the road.
I just was wondering, I was trying to figure it out.
In terms of the, what we call the next piece would be the academics. Under there, we're evaluating two things at the high school. One is the eleven hundred dollars for tables and twenty-five chairs. And the other is Rick and I are looking at HB The Change Challenge Day. We both agree it's a wonderful program, but it's ten thousand dollars and we're just trying to determine if we should look for grant funding for that, if we should look for alternatives for that. It may stay in, so I just, I just want people to be aware it's being considered. At the middle school, we have a wealth of programs that already exist, so we are going to be removing New Zella and Bob and I have discussed that, but we don't see any other academic changes. All the new graphic calculators, textbooks and all that is, is in the budget at this time.
Can I comment again? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, this is why.
Just, I swear, I'm not going to turn into one of those. So in terms of the challenge day, I think it would be really great to reach out to the PTA. I know they don't have a lot of money, but they're, they're not really doing major fundraisers anymore because they have no reason to. So the high school PTA used to raise a lot of money for that, um, they used to do some sort of event after graduation or after prom.
Yes, yep.
They did something like that, right? Years ago? And the kids would pay for that, but whatever. So I wonder if that's not a way to maybe make it a little bit, like, offset, not, not to take it out of the budget to explore that with them, so.
Absolutely.
Maybe PTA's not really into fundraising, but they don't have a reason to, like.
Correct.
And this was, this one was all funded by senior class.
Senior class in part and then a really big chunk from Rotary, so both, big chunks from both. So we've talked about different mechanisms.
Right.
Within leftover funds for the HB The Change group, senior class is talked about, you know, should it be a continuing thing where they donate any unused funds, but it is expensive, ten thousands on the high end, but it is, it is, it is probably in that seven to ten range.
You know, I'd like to see it, I would really, as a board member, as much as I really support it, I would like to see it partially funded.
Right.
With some sort of fundraising, whether it's HB The Change, whether it's, you know, whatever it is.
Right.
So, grants.
Under new computer equipment, we have thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty for Chromebooks and five accompanying cots at the high school. Rick presented what I'll call his, it's probably a four or five year plan.
Uh huh.
To really become what I'll call tech rich at the high school. So those are, as much as I possibly can will stay in the budget because they start phase one. And if folks remembered, we intentionally didn't buy computers last year because we wanted to do the upgrade to the wifi and that has gone extremely well. So we think we're ready to move out. On the same end, Bob and I are evaluating the Chromebooks that were requested for the middle school because we've done a wealth of purchases at the middle school level, four Chromebooks over the last couple of years, and we're just trying to balance everything in terms of requests. Also, under the academics, there's a smart board for the math department at the middle school. You'll see in parentheses after that, it says Title IV. Title IV is a new grant that just came out that can be used for technology, so you'll see that item move out of the operating budget, but it will be funded through Title IV, which Gina is overseeing, so that's why that note is there. So next time you see the round, that will not be in there. Presently, we are not looking under computer replacement equipment, pretty much everything that's in there. It will be difficult to cut much lower than that. If we were to cut back on staff laptops, we're just going to create a backlog and it's some year have to pay the piper, the servers. Gina just recently went to another training on HB sixteen twelve. One of the biggest pieces is the service security and we are starting to see our useful life of those dwindling, so we'd like to keep both of those. And the same with the food service direct, food service server. And then you see some switches and a laptop cot, we have one failing at the middle school that we will be replacing. And next is the software hosted service, these are all related to the business office and our, our operation. Just one example, ASOP is our software that we use for all substitutes, so it's an essential, essential piece of the business daily running. Under the safety issues, we are discussing the potential of the high school cameras because many of them are going to be used for the parking lot to start to give greater security to those to look at the parking lot funds, the money we collect for students. We try to use that specifically for upgrades, but this will provide greater security for the kids' cars as well as for us in terms of supervision. So that may be moving out of the operating budget, but into the parking fund. Bob and I have had a couple of discussions and we're very happy with the coverage we have at the middle school now. And Bob is quite confident that we can just take that out of the budget and remain status quo because of the work we did last summer. The quality of the cameras and their ability is, is tremendous, so it really has given us great coverage. So that twenty-two, one ninety-three will be coming out of the budget. Depending on where we get to, in terms of, we're always trying to make the guidance number and, or trying to get to a balance between that, where the board can get what we need to run a school district and the budget committee can feel that they are being fiscally responsive on behalf of the taxpayers. So under the facilities and maintenance, we may look at moving the roof section to the maintenance trust. We started that fund four years ago, we specifically started to build it up for the future roofs. It'll take a little bit of hit because unexpectedly we have Bob's fire panel in there already, but we, we can, we believe this might be a prudent thing to do and then it'll keep us on target. You can see there's some window seals asked for at the high school, we're evaluating those, and we're also evaluating what is a, see if we can get a, more of an exact quote on the insect control. And that may be the quote, but we're just looking at that. We are examining the NPR tables and chairs. Please understand that came to us from a, a study we had done on our custodial services to see how efficient we were. And what happens every day now is the custodians set up and take down those chairs, so Bob is suggesting from an efficiency point of view, getting along where you just drop the table and the seats come out automatically. I don't know if they'll make it through the budget, but it is something that we definitely want to do. And then when Bob and I were also discussing cuts, the tile flooring in room one oh three, if we have to, again, if we have to, we, we believe we can delay that. You know, that's going to, those changes, cuts, what happens through the evaluation process will bring us much closer to guidance. And we believe coming back in January, we'll have what I'll call a concrete number because we actually have two budget meetings in January, one at the beginning and one at the end. And I think we'll be able to meet the board's goals for reducing class sizes. A lot of that was done through Rick's efforts through the program of studies, so it's not a cost. And then we believe that the academic and maintenance pieces keep us moving forward in a fiscally responsible manner. We, we see, we know that we potentially have the STEM piece here at the high school. In Hollis, you have contracts for the paraprofessionals as well as the teachers. And in Brookline, you have a Warren article for a all-day kindergarten proposal. So each district has kind of a, a unique piece that they're looking at and that they're discussing to see if it will make their Warren articles, which we will also do. I, I want to publicly thank the budget committee for their effort. All my administrative team, Amy, Rick, Bob, Kelly have gone to the co-op budget meetings and presented their, their wants, desires, needs, and we have had great discussions. And I think that what always pleases me the most is the budget committee struggles to reduce items because they know the thought, preparation and time that has gone into it and it's not just a, a one-time thing. You know, we have capital improvement plans, we have tech plans, everything is mapped out. I'm happy to answer any questions on, on the budget, give you any thoughts around anything that you might have a question about.
Does anyone have any feedback for?
I already asked my questions, I just interrupted, so.
Yeah, I, I asked some earlier today when I was talking to them, so clearing up early.
The turf field we're going to talk about next or, or is that part of, sorry, I just got up to the agenda here.
That, that's fine. The discussion on the turf field tonight, John, is just in your packet, there was a red resolution, which is the formal, last meeting we took a vote on, on moving forward for the financing. In your packet you have the formal resolution, which is basically, the board has said yes. And then before you leave tonight, I, I need a series of signatures from you on various forms, which I've gotten from the other board members prior to the meeting starting. So the turf field is, is basically, we would potentially be closing the seventeenth, so that funding would be coming into our account the seventeenth. We have a facilities meeting on Thursday, January third, at three PM with the entire committee. And at that point, Teague and Bond will be coming down, the committee can ask them any questions, we can review the plans, and that will kind of be, I would say, an informal kickoff to waiting for the snow to stop and starting the project.
She's getting some notes.
Yeah.
One of the questions that came out of the BudCon meeting last was, and I couldn't answer it and I felt bad, so I'm going to ask it because I should probably know the answer. They had asked if you had an idea of outside funding, how much that, you know, what your estimate on that is.
Yes, I mean, we presently have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars pledged.
Okay.
There are other people still in consideration to pledge. I, I will be honest, there was. I, I will be honest, there were some people that, uh, shied away as a result of the lawsuit, uh, so that did hurt us a little bit. And then there is also what I would call, uh, the potential for in-kind donations uh, from various potential companies in this area that would like to potentially be involved in the construction of the field. And that's one of the discussions the facilities committee would be having on their January third meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I think our, uh, the next BudCon meeting is like a couple of days after that, so maybe we'll have some information from it. Thanks.
If there's no, uh, further questions on the budget, I'd just like to kind of get the board's thought on David's comments tonight about the Hollis field. And I guess what I'm asking is that I don't, we do not need a formal motion, but is there any board member that has reservations of allowing David's committee to come onto the property and begin the process of looking at, uh, the three areas that they're considering? Um, starting to ask some of their questions through their own companies that they'd be working with? And then, uh, giving David the ability to come back in January and kind of make more of a formal pitch, uh, at that point?
I honestly don't have any, any concerns with him doing a feasibility study, as long as we don't pay for it, it's fine.
Right, okay.
I agree, if he, I mean, that's the best way to go, and if the town's willing to pay for it, then I think we should allow that to happen.
Okay, so then, um, I will contact David and we will first take a walk, so he knows where the, exactly where the turf is going. I can kind of take what I believe I know from his plans. Uh, we can look at the practice, present practice football field as well as the other two locations.
And he, can he start anything before the vote, or we need to vote on that on, in January? Do we need a formal vote from the board to, for him to do a feasibility study, or can he just move forward with that?
Uh, to Cindy's point, we're not expending any funds, alls we're allowing them to do is look at the property.
Right.
Um, and then-
Just access to the property, I think, is the only thing.
Right, which is public land anyways.
I would expect that he wants to go forward with the town, that he needs to have something concrete.
Sure, no, I, I agree, I would imagine so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then I think that, that's his plan, is to come back in January, kind of be able to say what the town has told him-
Mm-huh.
As far as the feasibility study, and then if, at that point, you know, if they're looking to expend what I would say, um, the next phase of money, that's when we could make a formal vote to see if, uh, we should be doing some sort of memorandum of understanding-
Mm-huh, okay.
You know, with legal counsel on both sides.
Awesome.
All right, I will talk, I will talk to David tomorrow. Uh, we completed Rick's travel request. What I wanted to talk about in your packet, uh, I had included the, um, bond resolution, and it's the formal kind of agreement. Uh, I will be getting John's signatures on that on behalf of his role of the board. The treasurer of the, the co-op signs it, as well as Diane Levitt. This packet requires about probably thirty signatures. This will be overnighted to, um, Drummond and Woodson in Maine, that's where the bond council resides tomorrow. And as I said, he plans to, uh, close that, um, by the end of this month, and the money would be deposited into the SAU account. The first thing we would do is pay back for the surveys and studies that we did, uh, that have already expended out of the operating budget, and then we would sit until we had more information from Teagan Bond. There's, I know a number of you have, have already looked at this, contacted me with any questions you had. Uh, are there any other questions on this document? This will become part of the, um, the minutes from tonight's meeting. Uh, and this is the document that we are officially signing and submitting tomorrow.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yes.
Can you refresh my memory about how much per resident will pay per year for the field?
Uh, for the field, and it, and again, my number's gonna be slightly off, and it will be off because when we originally did the calculations last year, we were using a, a lower interest rate, uh, but we were projecting about fifty dollars per resident per year.
Per five hundred dollars? For a hundred and fifty?
For a three hundred thousand dollar home.
For a three hundred thousand dollar home.
For a three hundred thousand dollar home. So if you, if, and then people could go up or down from that. I, I think that would be obviously slightly higher because we were projecting at about a two-point-five interest rate last year, Melody, and we ended up with a three-point-eight. Uh, but to John's earlier point, i- if we as a board or as community members step forward, and I, and I have been contacted by some organizations that want to start doing fundraising after the year for the field, for some of the other elements that are not included in the field. Uh, but part of the goal would be to see if we can prepay that balance down and eliminate some of that interest that we're paying.
So that one fifty that we have now, without going directly to the, like, first payment or applied to?
Well, the way we would start is, um, we would work with Teagan Bond to get what I'll call a, more of a concrete number. Uh, once we have that concrete number, we would come back to the board, um, and the board actually would have to make that determination. You know, the funds were pledged to the field, but if all of a sudden we had an in-kind donation, uh, let's use best case, we come in under budget, what does the board want to do with excess funds? We find, worst-case scenario, we find out it's gonna cost a little more because of the, the increase in interest and, and labor costs because of what's going on in the economy, we may decide to use that one fifty to offset that. But that's, that's not my decision, that would be a, a board vote.
We then click accept.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could re- yeah, let's do a motion, yep.
Send you a motion to adopt the resolution for the two thousand eighteen general obligation bond, number R one, as read.
So moved.
All in favor? Four zero.
Excellent.
I think it was that cost, like, policy.
Oh, yay, it's me, and policy, it's in favor. I have a clean version, if you didn't see, I, I had to send you one, but, um, we re-looked at policy GBA. Again, we have a list of policies that came from the New Hampshire School Board Association. We kind of looked to make sure that these are, you know, matching up with RSA. Um, we changed some of the things that were brought up last time. Oh, I can't, am I presenting it first and then we're making a motion to, to reading, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to update what they mean.
So, right, so basically what, um, the RSA adds is the term gender identity. And so we put that in there. We also had a change that had said something like national ethnic origin. We kind of looked into that and realized that that doesn't really exist, so we kind of went back to our old way of doing it, which is nationality, comma, ethnic origin. We removed economic status because that was added in by the New Hampshire School Board Association, but it doesn't meet up with RSA, it's not in the RSA.
Yeah.
So we took it out, right, Bob? That's why we took it out?
Yep.
And, um, we also made sure that this sentence, the district will not discriminate against any employees who are victims of violent, harassment, sexual assault or stalking. We were wondering where that came from, and it actually, this, this RSA two seventy-five dash seven prohibited conduct by employer, that actually should be underlying because that was added to the policy, um, because that's what, the reason we put that sentence in there is because of that RSA. So, we made sure that it was referenced on the bottom. And then we repeated, we also added the word discriminate because we had inadvertently left it out last time. And then we just made sure that the sentence that was above gender, identity, race, color, religion was also repeated in the paragraph below, so that it was very consistent. And those are the changes that we made to make it consistent with RSA and also to, you know, keep it relevant. Any questions? It's a lot of work, man.
Ticking and tying things there.
And you had asked a question about why gender identity and gender, we went, we debated that, went back and forth, but really it's, at this point in time, it, it's two different things. Some people feel like they are a gender, and some people feel like they have a gender identity, and we don't want people to be discriminated against, and the RSA has both, so we're ha- we felt like we should have both.
So are you looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion for, I'd love to do second reading and final. We need a second.
I'll second.
I'm on second. So, all in favor of, um, taking the amended pol- policy GBA in its entirety and replacing it with the provided in the agenda and accept it as a second and final reading? Four zero. And, um, last thing on here is about the snow date, that we discussed a little bit last, last month?
Yep, uh, last month, the board had asked us to determine the snow date. I want to thank, um, Christine Bumpus and Mr. Bonds at the high school. Uh, we are recommending Monday, March eleventh as the snow date. Um, annual meeting is scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday night, the sixth and the seventh. Nothing on Friday the eighth, Saturday, Sunday, no activity. And then we would come back if needed on the snow date of Monday, March eleventh. So we'd like the board to formally approve that date, so we can be getting, posting these and sending these out to families in their planning. Um, but we really, I, I had checked also with Drew Mason, the moderator, and, uh, he is fine with that date. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions on that one.
Me either.
Okay, right.
So I need a motion to approve the recommendation of the administration to set the snow date for the two thousand nineteen annual meeting as March, Monday, March eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
All in favor? Four zero.
Yes, I do need a, a short non-public.
You want to report out in process observer?
Yes.
Process was great.
Thank you.
Full report.
Thank you. So I need a motion by roll call to go into non-public session. I don't have the number there, but you guys, you, you usually read the RSA.
It's under RSA one ninety-three.
Under RSA one ninety-three?
Reputation.
That, that was at the very beginning. When Dave, when Dave got up, there was that period of time.
Is it public instead with Dave?
Yep.
Yeah, she's, she-
No, I have-
She said she was gonna, we were rearranging the agendas, and then we would have public, and then Mary would talk about, uh, school.
She wants to do, if she wants to do it before we go first.
If you want to do it before we go, we haven't done roll call into the non- See, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, sure, you can do it now. It's yours. Um, I need a, uh, Mary Drew, I have one question for you guys, in Hollis. Amy Rollis, in attempting to help me study and transport you, emailed me information regarding a group run by African Association of Korean Women, K.A., N.E. I feel I'm heading in the right direction because I was aware of this group and attended many of their workshops. I also have registered to their support group. I have also spoken through a national line from, from this family, and I'm awaiting, um, phone calls back from Department of, and hearing information type of, is any of you know of other organizations, agencies or people who may be helpful to my research? Please let me know. Mary Drew?
Hmm, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to hear.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Glad we got you, had you to speak.
All right, so I need a motion to, um, by roll call to go into non-public session pursuant to the RSA nine one A three two, reputation.
So moved. I'll second it, John can be the first.
Thank you.
He ain't John.
I need to start racking those up.
We, we actually keep a tally. At the end of the year, you get it.
All those in favor by roll call?
John.
Cindy, aye.
Oh, Holly, aye, I thought we were going-
Melanie, aye.
Okay, we're just only four of us, so we can't keep track.
All right, so we will go to the public.
Yep, we'll head over to the conference room right over there.